There you go.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's a minute after seven, so I thought maybe we could wait just another couple of minutes to see if anybody else would join.
Absolutely.
Before officially starting the meeting.
I'll turn the recording off for now.
Sure.
There we go.
Great. Welcome, everyone, to the May twenty-fourth meeting of the North Beach Planning Commission. We can call to order the meeting. We only have one item on the agenda tonight. I'm assuming we don't have minutes to review for the last meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I didn't get an opportunity to get to them yet, so we'll catch up next month.
Sounds good. The only item on the agenda for this evening is to review the submissions from the survey related to the comprehensive plan. And I'm not sure if we have much of a structure for tonight's discussion. Really to review this, maybe any input you have, Stacy or Rick, just on the, I don't know, on the background and so forth.
Yeah, let me give you a little background, so. We promoted it pretty, pretty good. It's been on the town sign, we sent out a couple news blasts, I sent emails to all the council, all the committees to take the survey. It did come back with a hundred and twenty-eight responses. The survey just closed today at noon. So. I was able to pull down two PS real quickly for you all to look at, one of them is three hundred and some pages. Tomorrow Dawn and I are going to get together and try to compact it a little bit more and give it a little bit more structure on the survey, but I did want to give you some type of format tonight to review and take a look at what people were saying. So I'm pretty happy with the response rate that came back. I believe last time we did this. Anywhere between forty and fifty individuals took the survey last year, so I'm pretty pleased with this.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees it was good, good turnout. I might just, any, any, any other comments, Rick?
So I think the turnout was pretty good, usually your, your average response on surveys like this is three percent to as high as thirty percent usually for what they call like an external survey. So I think considering we didn't even get close to that last time and we, we pegged right around the five percent mark here, I think we did pretty good as far as survey results go. There are a few of the questions where they had manual responses, like types of businesses.
Yeah.
Those things, and they didn't actually do cumulative numbers in the whole data response that we got, so I will go through all that tomorrow. I'll go through all hundred twenty-six and I'll put together those two or three questions so we can get an idea of, you know, if there were, you know, sixty people who said they want to see more restaurants or more retail shops or, so we can get, get that and I'll get that back out to you. I did also want to let you know, John is not going to be in the meeting tonight, but he is. He is meeting with the Maryland Department of Planning this Friday, he has a meeting scheduled. They're going to go over the process that they want him to follow. He will start moving forward with drafting the response to them related to what we've given him so far. And then our next scheduled meeting, he'll, he'll bring us a full update on that.
Great, 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 great.
Yeah, he's going to go ahead and start drafting the responses to the areas that we really won't have any changes to, and we're kind of in a unique position being that where the size we are and we are roughly about ninety, I would say ninety-three percent developed, so. The comp plan really is only going to steer a very small portion of what's left in the town outside of water resources. You know, infrastructure utilities and that sort of thing, so he's going to get started on those and, and get a solidified plan with the state on how they want their submissions and when. And he's going to get started on writing that and he'll have update for our next meeting.
Okay, great.
So, so Rick, what does he do with this survey and the responses that the, that were received, how does that incorporate into the plan?
So I sent all that stuff to him now. And what will happen is, is where it talks about in, in the plan where it talks about future stuff, he'll, he'll look at what the responses were and he'll make recommendations as to development, road infrastructure and those sort of things based on the responses of the survey. First he'll look at it to see whether it matches what we already have. And there, there's a good chance that the, the survey response shows basically what we had in the comp plan to start with, and so again, there will be a tremendous number of changes to be made. I think you'll be surprised at some of the responses. One of the things that stood out to me was, well, I guess it stood out, but it didn't surprise me. The older population of residents was far more represented in responding to the survey as were the younger half.
Yeah.
But things like parking weren't as much as you hear about it. It was not significantly a, a huge factor in, in their responses. And so I think where we, we see a ton of, a ton of issues sometimes with, you know, it's always whoever can be the most verbal, you know, seems make things look a certain way, but when the response came back and, and personally, I think parking is an issue. I don't even live in town anymore, but I see Friday nights, but most people kind of just looked at that as a, a casual nuisance when you looked at the survey results, like they thought maybe parking needed to be addressed, but really was more or less on specific nights and specific areas, but as a whole, it wasn't really a huge concern.
Yeah, yeah. I agree, you know, on that point. So for me, that age point is, is a kind of a precursor to the discussion, right? There, there's, there's information in that survey, we can definitely chew on and discuss. I'm slightly concerned about that age skew on respondents, right? Super happy we got the numbers we did. But I don't, I can't remember the exact number, I don't have it in front of me, but it was forty or fifty percent above age sixty-five, something like that.
Yeah, fifty-three.
Fifty-three, right, so I, I, you know, as a member of the planning commission, I, I, I feel that it's kind of a responsibility for us to say, well, what's up with that and, and, and how do we get some better information on that? Not, not to invalidate what we have, but just to say.
So with the internal surveys?
Yeah.
Believe it or not, even ones that are done on apps or electronics. People over the age of forty respond like seventy percent more.
Yeah.
Than, than the younger generation does, even though they're, you know, gadget crazy. And I think that kind of just leans towards the younger generation doesn't really look at a lot of things, real necessities, there's, they've got time, you know, they, they've got their whole life to work things out, where as you get a little older, you realize, you know, maybe we need to correct things now.
Yeah.
As opposed to waiting.
No, and I think there's a whole point of kind of civic engagement and that tends to skew as people get older, maybe they have families, maybe, you know, that and, and so forth, so.
Have you all seen the results?
It's on board docs.
It is?
Yeah, it is.
How many surveys were sent out?
Well, then, I don't think any are sent out, it's just a link that gets advertised.
It's a link that was advertised.
Yeah.
Email blast, text blast, put it on the sign, on the website. It was, it was put out fairly aggressively.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe it's something we don't need to pursue, but as we're sitting here, my, my mind is spinning, say, ah, is there, is there a way? Is there some way to kind of get feedback from younger folks? And I don't know how to maybe do that easily, you know, and efficiently. But I feel like it's worth a thought, right? In terms of, I don't know. I really don't have any answers for it, but it's a, it's kind of, it's a question and I think we should at least think about that.
Also, I can also try and cross-reference the data from the last census and kind of get a gauge of the population differences by age in the town.
I mean, that would help, I, I mean, I guess, I guess it does, yeah.
Maybe it's not as drastic as it looks, if, if fifty percent of the population is over the age of fifty and and those first for response are, are relatively similar. It's, maybe it's not as big a concern, I, I really, I have a feeling it's not. It seems like there's a lot of younger families with kids in town, but.
Well, you say, you say that, Rick, but if you look at the numbers that came back about individuals who have children under the age of eighteen living at home, the, the response rate was eighty-two percent did not. So, so maybe we have an older, larger of an older population more than we realize.
I mean, that's sort of a global demographic right now with baby boomers anyway, you know?
In the information that was provided to us last month, the data from the twenty-twenty census, nine percent of our population was sixty-five and older.
Nine.
The bulk of our population was under fifteen. We have five hundred, I think it was like five hundred and twenty-eight people in town that were under the age of fifteen. That was the largest population group according to the twenty-twenty census. Though because the sixty-five and older, my people were fifty-three percent of this and they're, they're only like nine percent of our total population to me based on the statistics and the research courses that I had in grad school. I don't put a lot of stock in the information that I'm getting from this, just because I don't think it's representative of our citizens. It's representative of a certain portion. But I, there's so many other groups that really didn't buy into this, that, that we don't have any idea
Yeah.
what they're thinking and what their priorities are. I mean, it's great that we got this.
But maybe part of that you have to also take into consideration is that they just don't care.
I, I think there's some of that, and that's what I was talking earlier, my experience, I, I work a lot with communities and, and civil society organizations and things, and, and I think that you know, civic engagement generally gets stronger as you get older. And maybe the, the longer you've also been in the town and things, so I wouldn't expect, you know, fifteen to eighteen-year-old, twenty-year-olds, but as you get into, you know, mid twenties and thirties and people who do have kids here and things, that's a, that's a little more concerning to me, like, like a, a, a group I want to hear from. And so, you know, those are the ones that are invested in the town that have, you know, maybe they own a house or thinking about owning or something here, so that's where I'm most concerned is probably like the twenty-five to forty-year-old, twenty-five to forty-five-year-old somewhere in there. And that seems to be pretty weak as well. But honestly, I honestly don't know how to do that, I honestly, I don't know how to overcome that issue without a lot of legwork, you know what I mean, we are, we're all limited on time, we all volunteer here, how do we, how do we get to that without sucking up a lot of time and effort from everybody?
But is that age group homeowners or, I mean, are they just renters, they're here, they're transit? They're here for a short period of time and then they're going to be leaving?
I don't know.
There was a coalition done on the age and the response in regards to residency?
Yeah, there.
There was a question on that, I was surprised at the number of renters was higher than I would have thought for responding. I guess my, my quick assumption would be people renting, maybe they're short-term and they're not interested in taking a survey about, you know, the town because they're not as invested, but it was, it was higher than I thought, it wasn't real high, but.
Yeah, I mean, ninety, other individuals that responded ninety-eight percent own their, own their residential property.
Okay.
Really?
That's what's up. Commercial property was only one point eight-nine percent and residential was ninety-eight point eleven percent.
Was that?
It's question number two.
That was me for the commercial.
Oh, but it's if you, if you own property. So the first question is, do you?
Do you own property and the Incorporated Limits in North Beach? And the response was eighty-three percent, yes, they own property in town, and then the second question was if you answered yes to question one, what type of property? And so ninety-eight percent own residential property.
Yeah, but that's residential versus commercial, so that's if you, if you own property in the beach. So we're trying to figure out who, what the percentage of renters are.
Oh, okay.
So I, I thought I saw that question.
So question five.
Question five.
Is your home a rental property? And seventy-one percent said no, twenty-eight percent said yes.
Yeah, so twenty-eight percent said that surprised me.
But if you look, if you look at it, seventy-four people skipped that question and only fifty-two answered it.
Yeah.
Question five was a little bit, it was easy to misunderstand how to answer that one.
Yeah.
Stacy, is this the individual surveys, is there a way to get them into an Excel file?
Yes, yes, Dawn and I are going to do all that tomorrow.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
A question? I did not take the survey, bad, me a copo. Is there a question that asks how many of those owners that have residential property, that this is their second property and they're not really living here year-round? The reason I asked that question is because when I was on the campaign trail and I was going from door to door, I saw significant disparity in the listing that I got from the county that recognized who was living here and who was not living here and who could vote and who couldn't vote. And it was very, very difficult to determine, just even going from knocking on doors and talking to people who actually have a stake in this town in terms of, you know, type of conversation that we're having here.
So are you, so your, so your question is if, if their home, if this was their second home, like their vacation home?
If, if this was their primary residence.
Resident or secondary, no, that was not a, a specific question.
And also, I, yeah, so that's, that's not there, also that the question we were referencing earlier, question five, I'm not sure if I'm reading this correctly, but maybe there's an issue with that because it references question three. And it says if you answered no to question three. And so it looks like non-residents, question five is for non-residents. Am I, am I getting that wrong?
You reside within the corporate town in the North Beach, yes or no? If you answer no to question three?
So I think.
If you, yeah, so if you answered no to question three.
You're a non-resident.
You're a non-resident, and as you see, twenty-eight percent said that their homes are.
Yeah, see what I mean, so that's, that's, I think that's incorrect, right, because we, if, it should have been if you answered no to question, like, do you own property?
Correct, yeah, that may be, that may be.
Right, so that should have been in reference to question one.
And that may be why seventy-four people skipped that question.
Yeah, 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 so that's, maybe we just need to scratch that, because that, that's kind of, it's misrepresenting what I thought it was. Right? So.
Correct.
Well, once Stacy and Dawn get this into an Excel file, then it's easier for us to pull out data to answer questions like, okay, which age group is answering what?
Yeah.
If that's, you know, one of the data.
That could be helpful too, if we, if we have enough of them to make it substantial, right? Looking for the age, so I don't even know if we have enough of that, no one under eighteen, no one eighteen to twenty-four, three people from twenty-five to thirty-four, thirteen from thirty-five to forty-four. That, that thirteen might be enough to get something, a little bit of insight from, and then forty-five to fifty-four, only twenty, fifty-five to sixty-four, twenty-four, so those, you know, I guess you can get a little bit of insight, but that, at least that would be helpful to kind of correlate what those age, you know, what those age groups are saying.
I think it would, I, I mean, I was going through, admittedly, I was looking at one question just to see what kind of input we got about the adequate recreational facilities for kids. And I was looking as I was going down through the beginning of the long list of the actual survey responses, because I didn't get the whole way through. But I looked at the age, I looked at how they answered, I think it was question number ten, that was the one about do you have children in your household under age eighteen? And what I was seeing was a lot of people in that sixty-five-plus age group who said no to having kids in their household. But they were saying, yes, we have adequate facilities for kids, and I'm sitting here thinking, well, how do they know?
Yeah.
If they don't have kids.
Exactly.
So.
Exactly.
You know, that having it in an Excel file, Stacy, will be so helpful, because that way we can manipulate it and, and just, you know, pull out different things to look at.
Yeah, agreed. And also for the businesses as well, I, you know, if there's a difference, for example, on types of businesses ages might want, or their response to, you know, number of businesses, so, you know, do newer residents want more businesses? And, you know, I think there's a general perception sometimes that people who have lived there longer kind of want the, you know, North Beach quieter and less businesses, I have no idea if that's really true or not. But, you know, those kinds of correlations as, as well.
Okay, so yeah, so Dawn and I will work on that tomorrow, I'll get that out to all of you, I'll put it in board docs also, but also just send it as a email file to everybody, so then you can look at it that way.
Thank you for doing that, that's going to be a big job.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Appreciated.
Just quickly, I'm sorry, I don't know why I dropped off my internet, probably acted wonky. I don't know if my question made any sense, did it make any sense?
It did.
It did, and, and I think that's something to take note of for future surveys.
It was suggested to Rick, I, I suggested that when he asked us to give our responses.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. I agree with Elizabeth.
I put your question then.
Breaking up.
I can't hear him.
I think that, I think the question needed to be worded a little bit differently, like Elizabeth and, um, so you're we're have, we're recommending, I, I understand where you're going with it, I think it was just worded, it was worded wrongly.
Thank you.
Were we going to do something similar to, I think, what was done when, when the comprehensive plan was initially written? Where we have an open meeting where citizens can come and we just get various opinions and things from them, or is that something that we only do when we do the actual big plan and not the review?
Well, we planned on doing it with the review as well. We can take public comment at any time, we had discussed doing some meetings, that public comment, then other meetings with public comments, and if we could kind of concentrate instead of mixing the two.
I'm slightly, having been through that last process and considering the discussion we've been having tonight, I'm, I'm slightly concerned that that would be age skewed as well. The last, the last process was, I, I have to say it was well-attended, people did participate, but it's certainly skewed, you know, age-wise, a little older. So, you know, and I'm, I fully support doing that, I think it's good for people to come out in person and meet us and feel that their voice is being heard and express all that, and I also feel we have, we still need to crack this nut about how to, you know, get a, a, a more diverse age group involved.
Exactly. So what's the next step, Rick?
I mean, we have to wait, I'll wait to hear back from John on Friday, and then Monday I'll update everybody as to what the state had to say where they are as far as timeline for us.
Will he produce, will he produce a timeline to give to us?
So we've got about eighteen months relative to actually where the state's going to start saying, hey, we need something from you right now. So we actually got a decent amount of time. I don't think John wants to spend eighteen months doing it, and I don't, I think with what we've looked at in relative terms of, like I said, the town being roughly ninety-three percent developed, maybe even higher than that. Most of our modules won't won't change much. There's really no way to expand our residential footprint, it, it, it is what it is. We have a few pieces of infill commercial left, and that, that's really, that's really all that's left. And with the limitations of the wastewater treatment plan, even if we had a significant amount of infill and development possible, we really can only, we really only have so much room left to develop when it comes to that. So I, I, I think there's not a lot of updates going to take place. So I, I don't think it's going to take a full eighteen months. I think John thinks that we can get it done and get the, the review process and get it back to the state and then so it'll go to the state before it comes back to the council. And it goes through their, their vetting process and their clearing out. And then we'll have, we'll start having joint hearings with the council and the planning commission in, in public. But I think John believes we can get it done in the next four months.
Okay.
I don't really have any suggestions on how to try to get the population under the age of fifty to care or express an opinion or participate. Maybe we try another survey, we, we look at targeting it to other areas, maybe the the local restaurants and bars and some of the other areas where the younger crowd hangs out more, I don't I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I mean, we can work with the schools maybe, or.
With, with signs at the playground?
Yeah.
Like, even at the playground, like if you go to the Boys and Girls Club, they've got about twenty-two kids that take place in their aftercare, which is literally the cheapest thing in, in twenty counties. It's, it's, you know, it's five bucks a week or something. Most aftercares, three hundred dollars a week, you got like twenty, they might have thirty kids there now, maybe. I think it's like nineteen parents.
Maybe put a sign up in the post office, everybody goes to the post office, unless you've got the cluster mailboxes.
Yeah.
Maybe local businesses.
Yeah.
And we need a way to get to where the people are that don't bother to pay attention to our town website.
Yeah. I agree.
The town website, there was, there was flyers put up, it was on the town signs, it went out by email, text message.
Oh, yeah, I saw all of those, but somehow we missed, we missed that group.
I don't think we missed it, they just didn't respond to it. So it's, it's not about, I don't think, I don't think the question is how do we get the information to them? How do we get them to actually respond to the information?
Yeah.
Well, did we give them enough of a reason to want to? I mean, do they know what a comprehensive plan is? Do they know what kinds of things go into it, do they know what we're looking at? I mean, you say comprehensive plan, we know what it is, but your average everyday person may not.
That's good, that's a valid point.
Yeah, you know, that it determines, well, even zoning, you know, P, I mean, you, you need some trigger words that get people's ears to, you know, like what types of businesses do you want in the town, what type of, you know, I don't know, youth or kids activity.
I don't think it's a, a matter of them not understanding. I don't think it's a matter of them not understanding that. Library meetings. Relative to age of that age group come out to the meeting for the library, which wholly impacts. Families with children.
Yeah.
Majority of people who came out for them were not younger children having aged. They just didn't show up.
Yeah.
Well, and it was widely advertised, but yet there were people who didn't know that we were getting a library there.
I I don't believe that at all.
I've talked to them.
I I don't believe that it was, we couldn't walk through town without knowing that. Not to mention with all of the drama just the beach had because they were gonna allow us to have it from there.
What is that building and why is it so tall?
I saw how big the building was gonna be, but knowing that the library was coming here, everybody knew it was on every Facebook page.
No.
I mean, parents are also fifty-two, you know, that's all, you know, in a a survey that may or may not do anything, I don't know. That is, I could see.
I don't know how we get them involved or how we get them to care about being involved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I probably have a non-value added uh comment, but I'll I'll do it anyway. So what you're facing is not uncommon, you know, it's just unfortunately, it it is a symptom of just their age and what they're aware of. I I can tell you that when I was in that age group and I was grinding like everyone else, I, this was not something that I paid attention to. It's just a phase that that they're in. How how to get them to i- i- it's not any. I mean, it's not, that's why campaigns and politicians and have problems getting voters to the polls. It's the same same crazy issue. Um, short of going from door to door and knocking and doing it that way and asking questions. I don't know how you're gonna do it, you know? Well, I don't know, you wanna get on TikTok and do something silly to get them to do that? I don't know, you know, uh, it's just. Uh, it's a really, really tough.
Just to follow up on that, I I do agree. My experience is that that changes when people are, a couple of critical things happen when they own property in the town. When they're married, when they have kids, right? And and you're not gonna get an eighteen-year-old filling out this survey. It's not gonna happen. Uh, but I'd still be, I'd still really like to hear from, you know, the newly married couples, thinking about having kids that rents or owns in North Beach. I think there, those people would be interested uh potentially. Or the, you know, normal people in their thirties that that, you know, might own a house or something like that, or even rent long-term in North Beach. Those are the people I think, you know, that are a little more rooted in the town, and we really wanna get their feedback, and hopefully they'll stay for another decade or two, right? So.
So what's the current demographics of age in North Beach? Not not with the survey, just. The majority of the people in North Beach, are they, are they over, you know, fifty um?
Jennifer was just speaking to that. I I'd be curious to get some more. Without the um. Kids, like you had mentioned, there was a lot under eighteen, but I'm a little more uh interested in the. Those demographics, you know? Like twenty, thirty-four.
Let me see if I can, okay, um.
Well, why don't we have that? We have fifty percent over sixty-five and fifty percent of the survey under sixty-five. Isn't that fairly representative of? Of something within the community? And we're getting the opinions of, I mean, just like the transportation, the commuting ones, you got half the people that answered that. Why? Because the people over sixty-five don't commute, they're retired. So I mean, there is some.
Exactly.
Some information in here that can be gleaned from this uh current study without having to. Necessarily throw it out or go get more info or more people.
Oh, I agree, fully agree. I I'm not trying to dismiss the value of this. I think it's very valuable. You know, what what we have in it, especially when we can, when we can correlate against age on on some of these.
The um twenty-twenty census figures that were in um what John gave to us, under fifteen is twenty-five percent. Fifteen to twenty-four, fourteen percent, twenty-five to thirty-four, sixteen percent. Thirty-five to forty-four, thirteen percent, forty-five to fifty-four, twelve percent. Fifty-five to sixty-four, nine percent. Sixty-five to seventy-four, four percent, seventy-five to eighty-four, four percent, and over eighty-five, one percent. So that fifty-three percent was only nine percent of our population.
Yeah, over sixty-five is nine percent.
Yep.
Yeah, so I I that. That makes me feel like we have a little bit more of a responsibility to get, at least try.
Yeah.
We've tried to get some of those other uh people in there. And as I said, for me, we could, it's debatable, but I. I would be probably most concerned with the twenty-five to fifty or twenty-five to sixty-five range. I think that's most kind of realistic um to try to get some response from, and probably in the older part of that range.
Uh, the only way I can think about doing it is saying like before, you know, if we know the addresses of those. Uh, that demographic that you're targeting, you just gotta go knock on their doors. You know, that's what you gotta do.
Now, the Census Bureau does it, but.
Maybe we could do a little bit more reaching out on social media.
So are you trying to resend this survey out or? Give this survey a little bit more time? You wanna change a question or what? What is it that you would like to do?
I mean, my first thought, uh, I love the idea of going door to door, but also that skews your survey as well. We don't even know who lives where for age demographics, so uh I I I. And just in terms of efficiency, I I I I I'm, I I don't see that getting done. Um, so I I I feel like we'd have to, if if there was, if people are interested. It seems like using a survey is the easiest thing to do, but it's just a wear matter of how to, you know, keep the survey open, but then how do we? How do we target this or get this out? I don't know.
Was this survey sent with the um the water bill? So that you know it touched every ev- every resident?
No, it did not go out with the water bills.
I I really don't think water bills all go.
Yeah, no, I I'm not sure that would be either.
Water bills, like trying to uh getting.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of reveals go out now and just electronically to um our residents with our new water billing system.
But at least it touches, it touches them. Um, and that way, you know, when they get their water bill and they, and it says, you know, fill up, please fill out the survey. Because.
Still not gonna do it because ninety percent of our renters do not get their water bill, the landlord.
Yeah.
Don't you want the people who actually own residents to be the ones responding and not just these transit people?
I ha- I haven't looked at a water bill in years. I think that, honestly, I think that might even skew more older, the people that actually like kind of get engaged on a water bill. I I just, I I my my instinct is to try to get it somehow connected to the schools. Uh, people that have kids uh get on their social media or groups and try to promote it there. Um, you know. I don't know, maybe having signed. Office or.
I mean, I guess we could reach out to Windy Hill Elementary and Windy Hill Middle School.
I think that would be a start. Uh, yeah, I I feel like I I I'm interested in hearing from those people that have kids of those age in the town. Um, is there probably in that demographic, you know, twenty, thirty, maybe forty, something like that? Um.
Did you simply target that group in the message that sends out the survey? And encourage um.
Good.
Younger participants, you know, kind of with a banner in the message or something that.
That I think.
We need to respond, youth response or encouraged and.
Youth of forty.
Everybody matters and all that good stuff.
But I think it's a good point, Steve. I think something maybe really asking for people, you know, saying we're extending this. Um, we really need to hear from people from this age, you know, this age range.
I mean, that would be.
If you go back to when we had the 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 council meetings and the budget meetings, when we were doing a huge expansion on. The playground at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was substantial, you know, like, I think that was. What was that? It's like seventy thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, maybe, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna speak on the number. I I do, I do have one suggestion. It's been a long time since my kids were in elementary school, um but. A folder used to go home once a week with the elementary kids. And the town has placed flyers in there before. You had to get permission from the Board of Ed first. That we'd advertise our Christmas event or something like that. Um, I could see if maybe that's a possibility.
Yeah, they don't have, they don't have folders anymore.
But I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they get emails, weekly emails, uh, if it's not a folder anymore, that that could be put on.
Yeah, I mean, I can reach out to the board and ask them if it's something that we could do. See what I can come up with.
I think that would be great. And you know, just one line emphasizing that, you know, we're really looking, you know. We're, we're extending the uh the survey period because we really want to get feedback from parents or something, you know, and uh.
I mean, maybe we, is there a way to do a a raffle, like we could get some sort of gift certificate, I mean.
But then you get people doing like five surveys, like, you know, probably, probably somebody with more time on their hands doing.
Yeah, I don't know. I like I said, I, I don't have an idea. I have, you know, what's the old saying, you can lead a horse to water, but if he doesn't wanna drink, he's not going to. And and the thing I was mentioning about the playground, that was a significant thing that was taking place to expand. Stuff for the the youth in this town, nobody showed up for those people.
Yeah.
They just didn't, like, they just don't, you know, it, it goes back to when I, so when I worked at the jail, I was heavily involved in the unit negotiations and. And contract negotiations, and the biggest issue we had was all of our younger officers. Did not care about enhancements to retirement. Because it was something that's way down the road. They just didn't care about it. They wanted pay raises and they wanted them right now, whatever affected them right this second. And then the longevity things didn't seem important to them because, you know, they had all the time in the world to worry about those things. And and I think it just, that just translated across the board here. You see the, the elderly population more concerned with the direction of the town. And the younger population kind of looks at it like we've got, we've got time to correct it if it's not what we like, like it's not.
Right, you can also do a mailing to the um, to the residents, you know, mail, mail the survey out. To each home. But be careful, you don't wanna alienate, you're 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 trying to target parents with children, um, certain age group. Don't alienate the the single people that live here and own property.
Agreed, I, you know, I I but i- if if any ideas I think are on the table. But I think at the end of the day, we're gonna have to use this survey. I don't see, you know, we're all volunteer here. I don't see. I mean, unless someone wants to take some initiative on this, we're gonna have to rely on these kinds of, you know, efficient ways to. To get this circulated. Um, but I agree, I agree with you. If there's any ideas for reaching those folks, um. You know.
Well, trying to do another survey right after this survey sort of invalidates this survey.
Well, let let me brainstorm with Dawn a little bit and um. We'll send back some ideas next week.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'll leave the survey open. We can push it back out again, see what happens. Um, but let her, she's pretty, she's pretty good with brainstorming and marketing and things, so let, we'll brainstorm and we'll send something back out next week with a few ideas.
How about that, um, also that Nextdoor that um everybody?
The Nextdoor app.
Nextdoor app, there's the uh North Beach Boardwalk Facebook group, there's the North Beach Facebook thing.
Yeah.
Um. Twitter.
I mean, any of you can, you know, add that to those Facebook pages or the Nextdoor app. I'm I don't, I'm not on that Nextdoor app, but if any of you are. Um, a member of the Nextdoor app, you can put the link on there.
I can, I can do it on the Boardwalk page and the Nextdoor app if you want me to, just.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
If we, before I forget, if we can get that question cleaned up, the uh.
We'll take a look at it.
Question five, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just give me the link whenever. Okay, want me to post it, I'll post it.
Yeah, I, she, I, she may have turned the link off today at noon because I was was waiting until noon, so I'll have her turn it back on tomorrow and then I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Normally, I I would be, I'd be fine. I I think all of us would be fine. It was a great response, but the numbers on age are really skewed, you know, they they really are.
That difficult to understand. Question four and five are both, if you answered, one said, did you answer yes to question three, and one says, did you answer no to question three?
Yeah, so if you can review those days, maybe the first like five questions, make sure they're all synced up there.
Okay, we will.
Question three is, do you reside in the town? Then question four says, if you answered yes, how long? Question five says, if you answered no, is your own rental property?
Yeah, that, we were talking about that earlier, Rick. That three and five, that that question five needs to, needs to be corrected. It should refer to question one. Yeah. Right? Like, question one, do you own property in North Beach? Is there an actual question about, do you live in North Beach?
Yes, do you reside?
Yeah, that's no, that's question three.
Yeah, do you reside in?
I get it, okay, okay, yeah.
But there is no question about this being a primary residence or if this is just a second home.
True, true. I mean, you could do that as a follow-up. To question three.
I don't think we wanna change it too much if we're gonna just extend it, because then it kind of like you said, it kind of.
It does skew it.
Yeah, it'll skew the numbers that way. Um, I mean, you know, may, maybe in a couple of months after you review this, get some more data back. You may wanna do like a follow-up survey and, you know, there may be some additional questions that you may come up with.
Yeah. Okay.
So, and Steve, make sure you take the survey. Oh, you did? Okay, I thought you said you didn't take it.
No, I did, I took it, yeah.
Okay.
So did we get any information on the write-ins? Was there anything interesting in any of the write-ins?
That's all, I've gotta put all those together.
Yeah, there were two, right? One on business and one.
Who had in the business, one, what do you want, what you don't want, and then one on uh, just.
There, there was, there was, there was nothing to me that really stood out.
No, I I think, I was a little surprised on the business. Because of the age, in my mind, and this shows you, I'm probably just wrong. Um, that people that lived here in the town longer or older didn't want more businesses here, right?
Looked like more people.
They look like more. So that to me was a little surprising that, you know, not a lot. They weren't screaming, but they said, yeah, we would like some more businesses here. So I thought that was, I find that a little bit interesting. And then the one Rick was talking about in terms of parking.
Hmm.
Um, I thought that was, wasn't drastic, but you know, it 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 was different, a little different than what I would have thought.
Yeah, it wasn't overwhelming. There's this huge, people don't, there wasn't a sense that overwhelmingly, people thought there was a big, a giant.
Yeah. No, I think that's why these surveys are are good, because it does show you that, you know, a small group of people can sometimes skew. What leaders think, right? Because they're vocal or they have the time to show up to meetings or the time to complain or make an issue of things. And so I, you know, I think these surveys are good to, to kind of temper that a bit.
All right, so we'll look at those questions. I'll get with Dawn. We'll do an Excel spreadsheet. Uh, her and I will come up with some marketing strategies. I'll send that back out. So, you know, by next Tuesday.
If you want, we can send all that back out next week after I get uh my update from John.
Right. We'll do, we'll do, we'll, we'll do one big email to everybody next, hopefully by, no later than next Wednesday. Because we're closed Monday for the holidays, so.
Good. Good. Um, all right, uh, any, any other business?
Any other public comment? We're gonna take public comments today, so.
Yeah. Any other bit, or we don't, I don't think we have any true members of the public, do we?
Elizabeth, Elizabeth and Mickey are both on.
Any other comments or or any other business for today?
Nope. I'm mainly just saying that I'm in the age group that you all want, and I responded.
Well, Mickey, get with your friends and have them respond. That live in town.
Yeah. I think getting it, you know, to 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 just connect, uh, you know, uh, through the the Facebook pages in North Beach. You know, there's nothing. You know, there's nothing preventing any one of us as individuals for promoting this, you know?
No, you can put it on your personal Facebook page.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so.
All right.
All right, everyone, uh, do we need a motion? I guess we do to close.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can get a motion to to close the meeting.
I'll motion to close the meeting, uh, May twenty-fourth, PD.
Second.
Second.
Oh, and favor, do we need all in favor for this? All in favor? Aye.
Uh, aye. Have a nice holiday weekend, everyone.
Yeah, enjoy. Good discussion.
Can you say a question before? Before you go?